There you go. All right, everybody, I'd like to welcome everyone to the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty Rochester City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht is absent. Bavacqua?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Sage?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have Councilmember Harrison lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Harrison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I always say, there's a lot of pressure when you have to do it on your own. Tremendous pressure. Um, thank you. Next, we have the public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled presentation. Um, do we have, uh, State Rep Weber here?
He's gonna be, he's gonna be calling in. He did say he's gonna be a few minutes late, so.
All right. Uh, we will let him come in when he's ready.
All right.
Uh, next is approval of the minutes, is consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember, I
Pro Tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Salvia. Uh, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Here, yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, on to the approval of the consent agenda. First is the consideration of the annual know-has agreement with Oakland County. Next is Oakland County Equalization Division assessing contract revision. C is a consideration of an interlocal agreement with Oakland County Vehicle Services. D is the annual city council meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-one. And E is a consideration of Section one fifteen trust agreement or pension bond proceeds.
Ma- Mayor, could I note that on the, uh, schedule for the calendar, their, the final date in December is actually off. It's, uh, December twentieth, not twenty-seventh.
Good, yeah, I'm
I have a follow-up question to that.
Councilmember Sage?
So, it, 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 it's titled that it's the regular meeting schedule for the city council. It's indicates in the memo, the scheduled dates of the planning commission meetings are as follows, so is this our schedule or planning commission's schedule?
Sorry, I missed that, that error too. The template, actually, we've used now for, for both the planning commission and city council, so this one should say, "City Council," those are the dates. However, the final, uh, one was incorrectly listed as twenty-seventh instead of twentieth.
Okay.
The only other question I had before we make a motion would be on the, um, interlocal agreement. Who is our representative for this municipality to that board?
Is that for know-has?
Yes.
It's usually, it's Anthony, isn't it?
Yes, it is Anthony.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a
Discussion or a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Sage.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, uh, we do not have any old business to table items. We don't have any public hearings. We don't have legislative deliberation tonight. First reports and regular business is first reading and introduction of the personnel handbook update. City manager or Ms.
I have a quick question, um, to, to Attorney Crot and Mr. Wing. Um, when you say you know, first reading introduction, that's usually for an ordinance. Is this just adoption of this employee handbook and this would be the, the only time council would consider it?
When I, when I spoke with the labor attorney, she said, uh, in the past, we've had two, um, meetings for, for council, so it would be the first reading, so they get an opportunity to discuss it, ask questions, and then the second one would actually be the, the voting.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, to your point, though, that language is, uh, ordinance language, so.
It, right, but I don't treat it as an ordinance
Correct.
publication or anything like that. Thank you for clarifying that.
Never want to go against what the lawyers say, correct? Don't do that. Um, okay, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah. So, uh, a- as the memorandum, uh, states, uh, our personnel manual actually hasn't been updated since, uh, two thousand thirteen. Um, so there's, uh, a variety of, uh, really state and federal laws that have adjusted, uh, over the last, uh, several years. So, um, working with our HR department and then through all the department heads, we had our labor attorney go through and look at what, uh, our current policies are and, uh, note anything that needed to be updated or any additional policies that needed to be, uh, included in our personnel manual. In the past, we've also had some policies, I'll call that are, are just kind of single policies here and there, and all of those were now combined into, um, this updated, uh, employee handbook. Um, we've given the handbook to our, uh, union, um, reps as well as we walk through it, uh, each section with our department directors, and that is the document that council also has and that's, uh, attached. In the front part of the packet, we also listed out kind of a, an executive summary, if you will, of what is, uh, any of the changes or differences, um, in reference to our, our current existing, uh, personnel manual or policies, and that's the first couple pages that's in the packet. Happy to address any questions that council might have, but pretty much, for the most part, it's the state and federal laws that have been updated. A few, um, other policies that our labor attorneys have recommended that our community that we might not have had, uh, be included, uh, maybe some stronger language on, on a few things, like with our harassment, instead of just being a sexual harassment policy, it actually covers harassment, different types of harassment and that sort of stuff. Again, as our labor attorney, uh, recommended, first reading and introduction, and then at our next meeting would actually be the, uh, second reading for adoption, and, um, it would be effective as of one-one, uh, two thousand twenty-one.
Good. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Manager Wing, a couple of questions regarding the new policies, uh, within this revision. First being the blood donation policy, so uh, a different question. When an employee has a doctor's appointment, do they have to take unpaid leave to go to the doctor?
No, uh, we actually, if, uh, just like tomorrow, I actually have an eye doctor's appointment, I, I can take time off. We have personal comp time, there's other, there's other, um, uh, paid time that you could actually choose to, to go off.
So that's what blood donation would be, paid time off, PTO accrued, or that is just, I mean, it's an abhorrent effort, it just, it just seems like we're disincentivizing someone to go give blood, which is critical to some people. Um, we're, we're saying, hey, you don't get paid to go do that.
Right, so some individuals, you know, what we're trying to do is actually say, uh, similar to, to voting, that you would have, uh, some time that you could actually take off, but we're not gonna pay for it. So in the past, you'd actually have to work with your department director to say, "I'm gonna take off this paid time." Now, somebody could still, uh, choose to do that, they could use comp time or use their personal time to actually get paid to be off, to do whatever they want, and they could use that to, to donate blood or plasma or something like that.
All right, so I can get past the blood donation portion. Voting? That's a hard one for me to swallow, that you're gonna say to someone, "Hey, yeah, you're free to go vote, but I'm not gonna pay you the time to go do it." Um, if they choose not to do absentee voting. That, that one, that one just didn't sit right with me.
So, cu- currently, i- it's not addressed, so right now, you wouldn't actually be able to, uh, you would have to take time off, vacation time, again, comp time, to actually be able to go vote. This would actually allow us to say, "Okay, you can, um, you, you could be off non, not getting paid to do it, but be off the time to actually go vote."
That, that, that's precisely my point. The optics of saying to a city employee, "Yes, please go vote. Oh, by the way, we're not paying you for the fact that you're leaving City Hall."
Why would, why would you pay?
Can't you vote at, from five o'clock to eight o'clock?
I guess, good, sure. I mean, I guess you could do it at, at lunchtime then too, right?
Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Um, you know, I don't, um, I understand where, uh, Councilmember Sage is, you know, coming from, however, I'm also going to look at what our Oakland County, uh, clerk did, and, you know, they voted to put through, to pay every single employee, uh, to go vote on that day, and that's at a tune of one point two million dollars. So I would, you know, everyone has the right to vote, everyone has an opportunity to do that. I don't think that we need to be paying them, but it is a nice gesture that we allow them to go um, and vote, but there are many ways to do it now to where, I'm not exactly sure why this is actually in there, uh, now that you can do absentee and everything else, and I think that's kind of a, a personal thing, and I don't know why it's actually being put into the employee handbook.
Did you, did you want me to address that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so this is a, yeah, a standard, uh, language that, uh, really across the state of Michigan that most municipalities now have, and they're not choosing to pay. Um, I, I'm happy to have, you know, for the second reading, to have the labor attorney here, uh, to, to, you know, kind of, uh, I guess, provide further comment, but um, having language that allow people to, you know, again, to, to vote during the, the window, um, so that they could actually, uh, you know, be on the normal, uh, time, um, you know, if it's an eight-hour day, that they would be able to take s- some, some time off, not be paid, and actually be able to go vote.
Interesting.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on this one?
On the whole document, Mayor?
Well, no, I meant, I meant just on this issue.
Okay.
But or any, or anything, I guess.
Well, I, uh, Mayor, if I may, I, I guess I'm having a hard time as to why municipalities across the state would do that when the state of Michigan changed legislation to go ahead and allow for you to vote, you know, absentee or whatever, uh, all those different choices. And now, whether or not someone chooses to take two hours off to go to vote, uh, I'm not sure where that's, why that's in here.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
Yes, thank you. So I, I do agree that since we can do absentee ballots for any reason, I, I think the we're loosening our policy, not tightening it, by giving them, um, time off if they choose to vote in person. Um, and I also think our council, um, I'll say, uh, consultant, Mark Albrecht, is not here tonight, our HR uh, consultant, so I look forward to hearing his thoughts, um, on this. I did chat with him briefly about it over the weekend, and he said the executive summary of the um, handbook looked good, but he didn't have a chance to go through the details, so I'm glad we're gonna have a second reading and he'll be able to comment again.
I would, I, I guess I would say for the next one, maybe take that out. We can still talk about it. Um, anything further, counsel?
I do see that there's a hand raised. I don't know if Siena is probably gonna so that's probably if there's gonna be a motion, and I don't know if it's a resident. I just see the phone number called in.
Yeah, well, we can, um, address them now.
Okay. Which number?
I think it was nine-six-eight. They would have to hit star six to be able to speak.
There you go. Phone number nine.
I am a resident, um, of the city, and, um, I have a, a issue to discuss um, during the public comment portion of the meeting. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time.
Um, why don't we, we'll finish this issue and then we'll come back to public comment.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Um, further on, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, move forward the, uh, revised introduction of the new personnel handbook for first reading.
Support.
Is that with or without the voting um, issue? Or just moving forward?
I thought you wanted to table it till the next meeting.
Right.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure the motion was clear. The motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia, second by Councilmember Peterson. Um, discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just real quick, um, because there were so many changes made to the employee handbook, I would just suggest that next time we have a little bit more of a heads up on it, so we can actually have more time to really digest it all, or coming to a first reading like this and be able to have more questions.
We're good?
Thank you.
Um, why don't we, since we kind of got out of order, uh, with Mr. Weber, why don't he hasn't called in, why don't we go to the public comment, so we don't this person wait? Um, so phone nine-six-eight, uh, welcome, and why don't you give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Um, my name is Lena, and I live at four-two-seven Wilcox.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss an issue that has recently come up regarding work done on the alley adjacent to my property. I understand that this is city property, and the city has the right to do as they please with us. My concern is how it was handled and how I was treated by the city. I received a letter in August, late August, stating that my neighbors at six-oh-seven University had filed a complaint to the city regarding some of my landscaping that had encroached city property or alley. They, our city manager and Jason, confirmed to me that it was them that filed the complaint, and it was because they supposedly couldn't back their car out without hitting the rocks in the landscaping. Again, this is city property across the alley from their house, not theirs, not even adjacent to theirs. They clearly have enough space. Besides their paved driveway where they park their car, there's approximately one and a half more car length in space for them to back out their car. They're asking for additional six to eight inches of space. I've seen them back out and drive away in one full boot. Blaine admitted that he's never had a problem backing out, and there were no complaints of city trucks driving through the alley for Jason. In summary, the work was done due to a senseless complaint from my neighbor at six-oh-seven University, who is guilty of the same offense as they have paved their driveway and additional area for their garbage cans onto the city property. The stakes from the surveyors clearly show this as they are still in the ground. They are not being held accountable to the same standards as myself. When I ask why, I get the city sending letters to different neighbors, not six-oh-seven, but different neighbors, hitting them against me or putting me against them, telling them that I am complaining about their garbage cans in the alley, which is not true. I'm also told that many city alleys are being worked on. Yet the letter to me specifically says work was being done due to specific complaint by a specific neighbor. I am told that there is no bias, discrimination, or favoritism being given to six-oh-seven University, yet workers admit to me viewing this sort of behavior in other situations. Surveyors have been out two times to stake the alley. Blaine admitted to being out five times. James, Jason, even more. The city workers were out two times, two different days, each day a full half-day. How much in payroll dollars were taxpayers charged for this in addition to about two thousand dollars the paver's charged to pave the area, to patch the area for Jason? I spent, I spent three out of my four days off of work in October addressing this. For what? Five to eight inches to back out a car that obviously had more than enough space to back out. In the spirit of beautifying the city, this was a definite miss. They paved an elevated patch two to three times the width of the dig, not including the foot of damaged lawn, so the elevation, so they, they paved an elevated patch, two to three times the width of the dig, and this didn't include the foot of damage to my lawn, but the elevation, the trip hazard, can be evened out. Could this time, energy, and taxpayer dollar in the middle of a pandemic not been used more productively, more wisely? In a final effort to get answers to my questions from our city manager, the response I got, and I quote, "You do not need to continue to send me or the city emails or texts, however you can, and they will be added to the record." This response was unappreciated, undeserving, and can be perceived, perceived as disciplinary, intimidating, threatening, or an effort to silence me. I would hope that every conversation with city residents regarding city matters are documented and recorded. I'm a resident of this city and contribute like any other. I pay taxes, care for my property, and the city property around me, as I feel it's an extension of my property. I support city businesses in the best way I can. If, in fact, six-oh-seven University is being favored for any reason, especially that they own a small business in town, bring money to the city, pay taxes on two properties, or I pay taxes on one, there would be no business if residents like myself didn't support them. When I see my tax dollars being spent on such frivolous projects that directly affect me, I have the right to ask questions and, and deserve sensible answers to be taken seriously, not dismissed or pacified by answers that are obviously false. I thank you all for your time. I am happy to answer questions. I have dates, conversations, and photos to illustrate my points further if required. I thank you again.
Thank you very much for phoning in. Um, Mr. City Manager, do you want to respond to that?
We're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, I've shared with city council, actually, the correspondence, uh, with this particular resident. Again, the area she was, uh, referencing after we've done the surveying was city property. After working with our engineers, the best way to, uh, resolve the potential drainage issue, instead of putting gravel there, was actually to, uh, put a cold patch, uh, on the city's property, and that was done. Um, we are doing, uh, looking at various alleys throughout the community, and that information, again, has been shared with this particular resident. Um, there were, uh, complaints in this particular, uh, alley, and so sticking to the city's policy, we've informed all of the residents that had, uh, garbage refuse and recycling container, containers that were in the alley, and, uh, that, that was noted. Um, a- again, this resident, along with any resident in that particular area, um, you know, if it was on city property, we are still working with, uh, one or two residents that I'm aware of, um, that may have, uh, containers, uh, within the alleys, and so we're following that same process that we did with this particular resident that had some, uh, some rocks, uh, uh, in the alley, some decorative and, uh, some, um, uh, grading, so that the material from, uh, the plants and, uh, ki- kind of a retaining wall, uh, that was there.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick comment.
Councilmember Bavacqua?
Thank you. I, I guess I just hope that any time that, um, there's some sort of, uh, permanent obstruction or feature, um, that's been put there by a resident on city property, that we would take the measures necessary to remove them. I think that's fair.
We're good? Further comments?
Uh, Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson?
Um, yes. You know, I, I guess it's, it's hard, kind of, listening to, um, our constituents call in, um, not very happy with, like, the way we respond to them. Um, and I would just hope that in the future that, that can change to where, uh, there's a more respect for the people when they call in to complain, um, and that we can do a better job, hopefully, of remediating some of these issues, because we've had many issues in the community that we've had people come before us or call us in, you know, kind of in the same thing because somebody complained. I just think that, you know, um, uh, being that good neighbor, uh, takes a lot, and if people are calling to complain, and it's something that, um, you know, the city sees as, you know, uh, City Manager Wing believed it was, it looked like he believed it was not a, a big, serious thing, that we could find a way to, um, not have these things escalate to the point where I feel some of these are.
You? Anything further?
I feel that part of the issue is the fact that I was sent a letter stating that this specific neighbor complained about me. Um, it did not say there was a complaint. It did not say the thirty is working on the alleys, and mine was one of them. It specifically said, "This specific neighbor was complaining about me." A similar letter was sent because I had asked why my side was being worked on, and this specific neighbor has paved onto the city alley. Because I asked why work wasn't being done on their side, a letter from the city was sent to them and another neighbor that had nothing to do with any of this, saying that I am complaining about them. Now, these letters are unprofessional, and they create animosity and disruption between the neighbors and the neighborhood. And I, I did not appreciate that approach. The other piece
Go ahead.
When, when Blaine came out to explain to me what he was about to do, I agreed to it. When the workers came out, it was completely different. It was no longer the area where the trees were and my landscaping was. It was the entire length of my property, the entire length, that is now patched and looks horrible for no reason. The, the area was beautiful. I kept it well. I weeded it. I mowed the lawn. It was beautiful. There's so many alleys in the city that need work more than that area did. Why are we not spending our money on those and spending money on something that absolutely did not need it?
Okay, counsel?
The other key
I'm sorry.
Um, one more point, please?
Yeah.
The other piece is, I was sent a letter in late August, and there was a great sense of urgency for this work to be completed. The work has been completed for over six weeks now. Blaine tells me letters have been sent, sent out, and it takes time to get the, the residents to abide by, you know, what's in the letters. The work on my side has been done for over six weeks. The stake is still in the ground on the other side, the side that six-oh-six, six-oh-seven university resides. It's still in the ground, and I have pictures to show that it runs right through where they have paved. Why the unfair treatment?
Thank you.
If I, if I can note, so, uh, city council, uh, does, uh, know that our, uh, city attorney has been working with the code enforcement, which is through our fire department. We've updated the, the letter, uh, not just due to this particular resident having a, a question or concern about how our format was, but that has been addressed. Um, similar with this resident, going from August through October, um, the residents that are in violation currently are going through the same process right now, and again, just like, uh, this resident, there were issues of, or concerned about timing. However, we do allow the residents to address those issues and concerns. So if we stick to, you know, the city's standard process, that probably would put us towards the end of December for resolution if we don't need to escalate, or does, does need to escalate, uh, to court or further, further actions. In the past, probably ninety percent, ninety-five percent are able to work with, uh, you know, uh, residents directly to get those issues resolved.
Councilmember Sage, you had a question, comment?
And, and I appreciate the resident calling in to, to voice her concerns, and my only question to the resident is, what, what about the conversations you've had with your neighbors? Were they fruitful, or? I mean, we've heard about conversations you've had with the city. How about your conversations with your neighbors?
Well, um, the same neighbors, um, so this landscaping's been there for probably over ten years. The city paved around it three years ago. These neighbors moved in right around that time, and they put in a complaint to the city for this issue two years ago, and it was dismissed by the city, and I knew about it, and I didn't say anything. I was very friendly towards them. When I received this, this When I received this, this letter, which was the second complaint in August, they came out. They were friendly towards me. And I asked them, I asked them, I was very nice. I said, you know, is this really, really a problem? Would you reconsider? This is a lot of work. And at that time, I was worried about my arbers. I have trees. There are separation trees that separate my private property from the public alley, and they're, and they're quite large. And I was worried that the work was going to destabilize the roots. That was maybe an expense and a lot of time for me to regrow them. So I asked them to reconsider. And at first he said, the city wants to do the work. And I said to him, I got the letter, and it stated that you complained because you couldn't back your car out. And he said to me, well, I can't back my car out. And I just said, come on. And he kept his ground, and I walked away and have not had any interaction since then with them.
Oh, well.
You know, it's, I mean, I, I'm a good neighbor. All the neighbors around here are wonderful. My previous residents, I was there for nineteen years. All my neighbors were wonderful. I don't understand. I, I just don't understand them. And then the city backed him up. That I don't understand even more.
So we're sorry, we're sorry for that. It's never fun to have neighbor issues, I feel for you there. What, what's the next step, Mr. Manager, or is there one?
Yep. So the city did pave the city's property. This resident, as I explained to her, you know, she, she's able to come before council and voice any concerns, complaints, you know. Again, the city is going to be maintaining this upcoming winter when the snowplows come through. Unfortunately, I believe we've already had one of the garbage trucks already clip a portion of one of the wires that's over in this area. So it's, it's really a tight alley. But now that the rocks were removed from the silly, city's portion of the alley, we're not anticipating the snowplow blades actually having to diverge from. So the issues from various residents regarding this alley not being shoveled or paved when the plows go through should, should be resolved.
You're good.
With all due respect, Blaine, with all due respect, you did not tell me that I can go before council. I got that information from someone else. The last communication I had with you was what I quoted, which was a text back to me saying you do not need to continue to send me or the city emails or texts, however you can, and they will be added to the record.
Yep.
Jason stated that there was never any complaint. We're talking six inches. There were never any complaints or issues with any of the city trucks driving through this alley.
Disagree. That's not, not what our Public Works snowplow crews have advised.
And you, as you say, and you're always, any resident is always welcome to come before city council for to inform us of ideas. So we appreciate.
Thank you, and I understand that. And that information was not shared with me by Blaine. It was shared with me by someone else. And the last communication that Blaine and I had was, was what I just quoted you.
I'll, I'll just respectfully disagree. When I was out there several times, if you had any, any issues, you asked me who my bosses were, and I explained that city council would be the appropriate forum. And they are my bosses, and, and you're here now.
Okay. Any, anything else, or we, well, we appreciate you coming in and letting us know this stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto, while we're on public comment, we'll go to Mr. Weber. State Representative Mr. Weber. Welcome tonight for your final, final report. And well, go ahead and give your report, and then we can, we'll can talk afterwards. So.
All right.
Welcome.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bixson, City Council, City Manager Wing. And, and as the mayor said, this is my last time addressing you as, as state representative and giving legislative update. Certainly appreciate the work, working with you over the years to represent our, our residents that, that we both serve. Wanted to give a quick update, just a couple of minutes. I know you guys have probably a very busy and, you know, end of year agenda here, but we are currently going through the lame duck process, lame duck session. We do have one week left. It has been not as, you know, eventful as maybe some past lame duck sessions, and, and that's probably a good thing overall. At the top of the agenda, you know, you've probably heard a little bit about this from MML, but Senate Bill twelve forty-six would be, and it's already passed the Senate, it would extend the, the virtual meetings that city councils and school boards and what have you can have through the end of March. And so I expect a broad, you know, bipartisan support on, on that. This week in the House and getting that to the governor's desk for planning purposes going forward. And then, you know, we're working through potential supplemental budget, and I know negotiations are still ongoing, but, you know, the governor has called for kind of one hundred million dollar supplemental budget dealing with COVID-related issues and we'll see if we can, if that can kind of come together this week. There's certainly a need for a lot of different things when we're looking at healthcare workers. We're looking at assistance for small businesses. You know, one of the pieces of legislation I introduced that got a hearing a few months ago was a sales and use credit, tax credit for PPE, knowing that a lot of our businesses, when they started the year in January, you know, did not see the, the, you know, the, the need to have this type of PPE the way obviously we've had to do it since, since March and April. You know, obviously unemployment benefits, extending the ability for unemployment benefits, business liability. These are all things that the legislature has either worked on or is, is continuing to work on this week. Certainly, we're all fielding calls from restaurants and other businesses that are closed because of the Department of Health and Human Services orders. And, and certainly understand the uptick in cases. I think we're trying to kind of come, find that balancing act. And I know, you know, some of us have been pushing for, you know, transparency in terms of the metrics used to make some of these decisions. Obviously, we know there's a, there's continuously, there's a pause until December twentieth. And trying to kind of work through that, knowing that, that may get extended again. I think that's, that's the thought that a lot of people have. Another bill that I want to put on your radar that unfortunately I don't think is, is probably going to come up this session, although we did try to do a vote on it a few weeks ago. But House Bill six four four zero, Rep. Steve Johnson from Grand Rapids area introduced it. It's part of a, a large, over one hundred bill package, but the, the, the idea would be in terms of all the public notices and the ability to put those more online versus in the, the local papers. I know on my time as Rochester Hills City Council, the amount of money that the cities and townships budget for, for those notices. So that's, that's something that I hope Rep. Johnson reintroduces next session. Rep. Coleman from Westland on the Democratic side is also a sponsor of like thirty of those bills. And so it's a bipartisan effort. And it's something that's been kicking around, lancing for a number of years, but we do think it would save resources for the city that could be put towards, you know, police, fire, parks, you know, et cetera, kind of thing. And, and a lot of people obviously get a lot of their notices and a lot of their information on, online as it is. The other bill that we're going to look at this week is a Senate Bill, Senate Bill fifty-four, Wayne Schmidt from Traverse City. It's bringing back the historic tax credits, and so I bring that up just because I know the city has some historic property. And so we'll see if that, if that gets going or not. Obviously, those kind of phased out under former Governor Snyder, but there's been a continual push to, to potentially bring those back, which would obviously help our, our communities try to revive some of these historic properties that, that are in our cities. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring up, because I know I've touched on this a number of times before the council, but the, the stormwater package, we did make some significant effort behind the scenes on that, working with business groups, but really to no avail. And so I, I'm sad to report that that's probably going to be something that, that's going to have to be picked up by a future representative. It's still an issue. Rochester Hills, Birmingham, a number of communities in Metro Detroit are struggling with this, and something does need to be done. I think people recognize that, but it's, it's been a bit of an uphill battle in terms of working with some of the business groups that are, are currently opposed to it. But, but just wanted to give you that report as, as we're, as we're leaving. And, you know, again, want to thank you for your service. Want to thank you for taking the opportunity to let me make these updates maybe a few times a year. And, and also want to thank Mayor Bixson and the council. I, I came home and I, I got a nice letter here, and so I very much appreciate that and working with all of you over the last six years.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we just signed the letters just thanking State Rep. Weber for his service, for his help for our community, for his service when he was a Rochester Hills representative. He was on OPC Board. He served with me there. So along and fruitful, what, what is next on the agenda? Do you know yet?
Well, yeah, back, back to the insurance world and, and back to the, the real world there and looking forward to it. So.
Very good. Well, again, we appreciate your service. Look forward to seeing you around. Are there, are there any questions for State Representative Mike Weber?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Member Peterson.
Yes. Again, Mr. Weber, thank you so much for all that you've given to our community, and it's always been a pleasure to get your updates. I have a couple of things if you want to like just pass them along. I would like to see if we can get to the bottom of the Secretary of State issues regarding expired license, licenses and passports, so people can get in and get them. The hardest part has been the time delay, and when it comes to getting a mortgage and things like that, we're actually allowing, you know, these things were never allowed before to have an expired license or a passport. So I think that needs to be one thing that they start really working on. I've been discussing this since March. And thanks again for bringing back those historic tax credits. I hopefully that will, they will be able to do something with moving that along. And then regarding the stormwater package, what, can you just give a brief for the residents, what that's about?
Yeah, I mean, real, real high level, you know, a lot of communities had some sort of like stormwater charge or fee. And there was a, a court decision in probably about twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen that, that did away with that. And so a lot of communities are now trying to put a different stormwater like utility system in place. But the concern has been that, that every single time it goes into effect, there's one law firm in, in the state that just kind of goes around and, and has litigation with those communities in terms of how they set up their stormwater system. There's some that have been able to kind of fight through that. I know actually the city of Detroit has had some success with the system they've put in place. But MML would, would just say that a lot of communities are very skittish about putting it together. And I know, you know, your legal counsel is, is on the call too, so he can maybe expound upon that. But, but there's just a lot of concern, but at the same token, you need, you know, you need to kind of address that stormwater issue, and each community is doing it differently. But I know like the city of Rochester Hills would like to go back to kind of how they, how they were doing stormwater before that court decision and, and city of Birmingham and, and some other ones. And so legally, you know, they can do it. It's just the, the bill that we were trying to push was, would be a framework that everybody kind of agrees on and signed into law by the governor. Everybody can kind of, you know, there's transparency in the process. And, and until that happens, some of the communities are just kind of have some trepidation about putting something together and, and getting sued by this firm.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then one last question, if I may, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Will there be more regarding the unemployment benefits that have been continually extended? Will there be more work done on all the fraud that's going on with the unemployment benefits because?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very much so. I mean, we, we do have a bipartisan task force on, on COVID-related issues, and this has been talked about. And I think actually, a lot of this has kind of come out because of some of the questions that, that the committee's asked. And, you know, I, it, it's just been, it, it wouldn't, you know, at the height of it, we had something like one point two million residents of Michigan that were putting in for unemployment benefits. And so I think there was always a thought that, that some would fall through the cracks in terms of some of the fraud. But obviously, it's something that we have to clean up, and, and I think there's, there's bipartisan understanding of that, that that's something that we need to address going forward.
All right. Thank you so much, and thank you again for serving, and thank you for being a part of everything.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bavaku?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mike. Just a quick follow-up on the storm water utility issue. It is a big issue. You know, the, these systems need to be paid for somehow, and the inability to generate revenue for them is, is a problem. Who are, and what are, I guess, in general, these business groups that you're talking about that are opposed? And just real briefly, what, what are their concerns? And in general, who are they?
Yeah. So one of the big ones is, is NFIB, National Federation of Independent Businesses, and them and, and some of the others, we, we've actually worked decently well with the Michigan Chamber of Commerce and the Detroit Chamber of Commerce. I know Grand Rapids Chamber is another one that's, that has not been very supportive. And, and kind of the main thing is, I, I think they just see it as another thing that, that a city government would put on, put on businesses in terms of a, some sort of fee or, or some sort of, you know, cost of doing business in the city. And, and while that may very well be the case, it's, you also want a, a good, you know, stormwater system and not have problems.
For our, we pay for our, our infrastructure.
Not, yeah, and not have problems within your, within your system. So, and, and I'm not, you know, I'm not a big, big government guy, you know, myself, but it's just something that we, we've always kind of had it this way. And then with some of this litigation, it's kind of put, you know, communities like Rochester, Rochester Hills, Birmingham, et cetera, kind of in a deficit in terms of trying to figure out how to, how to fund the, the stormwater projects going forward. You know, to some degree, some, some of them have, have kind of said to me almost like we, we like the, kind of the, the uncertainty of it all because, you know, it just, if, if somebody puts something in place, obviously there's that mechanism where there could be litigation and and, you know, for our cities and, and for our residents and people that depend on this infrastructure, you, you know, there's has to be something that, that happens. So I was very optimistic at the beginning of this session, the twenty nineteen, you know, calendar year, and then it just, it, it was something that we worked on. Obviously, with COVID, some of that work transitioned into other things, but I think it's something that hopefully the legislature gets back to next session because the problem is not going to go away. So.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Weber, and happy holidays, and we will see you around town.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right.
Okay, next is on to a recommendation to purchase radio equipment at a discounted price for police and fire due to county radio upgrade, upgrade project. Mr. City Manager?
Yep. So this is on council's agenda because we could actually be getting the, the discount through the county. The county uses the state's radio frequencies for our Um because we could actually be getting the the discount through the county. Uh the county uses the state's uh uh radio frequencies for emergency. Uh for for both police and fire, and as they are upgrading to a new radio system. Um, the city, we don't have our own to connect into, we would need to upgrade. So instead of just outright uh waiting for probably nine months to a year, uh just purchasing um the equipment at that time. Um, there is a discount that is available and um. You know, we're, since we're going to be required to basically purchase this equipment, um we we. Meaning the the department directors and then looking at the budget, um thought it would be behoove us to actually purchase that. At the lowest price that we could actually get it. Uh the Police Department and the Fire Department did go through and see which radios and equipment we would get. Um, and there are, you know, as they're listing out in the packet that there are a few pieces that are required that this city would be responsible for. Um on both sides, and that's listed out here. Again, there's a a, you know, a sizable discount that is available by purchasing it now. Um, I will note that the warranty will not kick in until the the county has the system up and working, so we're not going to lose out on that. And um I see that uh, you know, the. Police chief's here, and I I think the fire chief is going to be trying to call in, so.
And I think this is what you call a unfunded mandate right here. So um, also questions?
Just a comment.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. Um, I thank you for um looking into this here to find a way to. Um, save some money and um, you know, utilize the service and piggyback off the county and. Uh, one question though is how often do or will they be updating? It seems like not long ago they had to update. Some things I know with the nine one one to Oakland County. Um, is there anything else? Future or is this every so often?
Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this is the Fire Chief.
Mr. Fire Chief, how are you tonight? Welcome.
I'm well, council. Hope uh all are are well. Um, the radio system was last updated and Chief Steve helped helped me if I can, but about fourteen years ago. Um, it was funded through a tax on your cell phone usage. Um, as uh Mr. Wing said, they were now going to the MPSD state radio system. Up until uh that time, Oakland County was on its own. Uh radio system in the state of Michigan. This will give us interoperability throughout the entire state. Um, and uh as the the city manager indicated. Um, if this the the proposed action gives us an opportunity to have quite a a savings. On this equipment that was not covered in the uh county purchase or the county funding from. The um phone cell service tax.
Awesome. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Report.
Report by Councilmember Sage to purchase the new radios. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bavacqua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, we have the annual evaluation of the Finance Director Treasurer. Just for um residents who might be asking. Uh, the Finance Director Treasurer is a report to the city council, so we have to do a yearly evaluation. And um it's always a little awkward doing in public. Um, the. City Manager, the Clerk, and the Finance Director do have the option to do it in closed session if they choose to. Um, but Finance Director Majo, that he would do it in public. So, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, I I would add is our our standard practice and policy has been uh that the uh employee, so Anthony, in this case, did a self evaluation. Uh after the initial year as a a director, we have uh another department head do the peer review. And then um myself is the director overseeing the directors, as the city manager did one. Uh council then has uh the opportunity to provide your input. And uh we've utilized uh in the past either myself, uh the the clerk or the attorney to. Uh kind of aggregate the results of that information um from all the council members and. Um, in the past, since I've been here, those normally have been in closed session. Um, but then you guys discuss, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of the process.
And I think we, I I think the city attorney sent out. Um, the tabulation of the city council members who chose to. Fill it out. And then uh, Anthony, you have a presentation to give?
Yes, Your Honor.
So if you want to do your screen staver and. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council. First step is, of course, getting the correct screen. Here we go. All right, you guys see the uh evaluation screen? Is that up now?
Yep.
Looks good.
All right, great. All right, thank you, Council, this uh for having this come in this evening here for the evaluation. I'll jump right into it. There are some highlights I wanted to hit for the evaluation this year. And speaking of having in uh open session here, transparency, one of the top points I'd like to highlight. Uh in my department, uh this acronym here, uh TAPERS, we um. Set all the goals and objectives for the employees, for my staff, uh for myself, and it's kind of how I use. The guiding principles uh to kind of steer the the mission for the finance department. So we have transparency, accountability. Protecting, educating, reporting, and services. Running into transparency, very uh very happy to report that we continue to get the CAFR award each year for financial reporting. And then brand new for this year, I am very happy to announce that we have received for the first time. An award from GFOA. For the distinguished budget presentation award. Uh that is um awarded in trienniums. So we have it for um for for the three year period, and we're actually in year two because of the. Delay from uh from COVID and uh uh and practice that it was a little bit late getting it to us, so we're kind of in our second year. We got told that, hey, you had it for the first year as well, uh but but very happy that that we're uh we're able to procure that. It it's a lot of uh hard work and dedication from the whole team on all levels, residences, uh all the way up. Through employees, uh council, the elected officials, the community partners. Uh to to be able to get it, because you really have to have a lot of uh of thought and. And creativity and commitment uh for bettering your community to to get all the points. Uh that you need to be able to uh to to receive that award. So I was very, very happy to see that we uh have made that point. And then the ever evolving quarterly financial reports. Which, of course, are um uh as council has noted, easy to kind of digest, or trying to make some really easy to look at. Uh reporting tools that we can make our decisions on. Um, on the accountability side, uh we obviously have done a lot over the last few years. I kind of pulled up. A budget from a a number of years ago, and it's amazing when you put them side by side to kind of see how different. Things have gotten uh over the years, uh whi- which has been really great. Um, we we have now uh tied. Goals and objectives on all the all the levels in the city here that are tied to the SWAT. And to make sure that we're doing things that are moving and addressing the needs that council sets forth. And then also having our um regular meetings where we find out, okay, how are every, how's every department doing? Uh budgetarily, financially, and if anything's uh come up that needs to be addressed. And then I have my meeting uh then with the city manager to say, hey, you know, this this kind of cropped up in our meeting over here in this department. Uh worth noting, and and let's make sure that we put that on the list to address. And then, of course, cannot forget the Budget and Finance Committee. It which we work very closely with in the Finance Department, of course, to make sure we run ideas and everything by. Uh to kind of vet those concerns uh before we bring them forward to council, and that has worked out uh very well. On the protection, uh pension bonding, I wanted to highlight, there's um. You know, I always try to not think uh. Probably going to reword this later, not think normally. So outside of the box and uh make sure that we're doing things that aren't just because that's what everyone else is doing. Um, this recently approved plan and investments with um uh Morgan Stanley to invest the bond proceeds. Uh, no one had ever heard of that that concept before. That hadn't been an idea that was. Um heard of by either our investors, our bond council, uh or treasury. And um I I, so I put the challenge forward, and I said, well, why not? It's what's in the best interest for the the city. The residents to get as much uh control over our destiny as as the committee phrased at once. Uh, to be able to invest those dollars and get uh as much control and return. Um as safe to do so, without having the funds completely transferred over to MERS. So this was a uh Rochester first. So I I'm proud of that, uh to see that we're able to see it through all of the uh the vetting process and and get that for us and the community. On the IT side, we obviously had a lot of challenges that have come forward during COVID nineteen. Um, one of the the biggest challenges that uh was that very, very early on in the the pandemic of. Trans- transitioning to the remote capability. Um, that that was something that as as we started to see it coming, I wanted to make sure that we. The um is the city and all the services that are provided by the front office staff, whether it's processing building permits. Which which was still happening during COVID shutdown. There were still permits coming in, plans that needed to be co- uh come in and get reviewed. Uh whether it was lot splits, all the other paperwork, property, people were still buying and selling houses, getting all the paperwork, payments. And everything um still still done without having to miss a beat. We didn't want to miss uh any steps or or tell any residences that. Sorry, we're not offering that service and we can't help you in until later. There there was not one uh one thing that we had to. Not uh that we were not able to provide during that, as long as it was within a um a. Government mandate at the time that allowed us to do it. The grant funding. This is not a small endeavor, uh but um obviously, as council knows from the funds that have been uh received so far. And the more that are outstanding, um you know, we're I'm staying on top of that. I want to make sure there is no. Funding that is missed and any potential funding uh is explored. Um, and and not just for COVID. That hit a lot this year, but as council remembers. Uh, you know, for the last couple of years, you know, like the tot lot, for instance, with the trust fund, trying to find ways that we can accomplish. The objectives, uh council and projects that that you guys have put forward. Um a- and get some assistance uh in grant funding uh to to pay for those projects. So. I I thought it was i- important to to uh at least talk about that, to just as kind of a reminder of just how far we've come so far. And then also on on maximizing the funding, you know, it it's a little bit. Extra tricky for us this year, having the safer grant. Because with federal funds, you're not allowed to overlap and get paid twice. So you can't get a seventy five percent reimbursement. For fire and then turn around and get a a reimbursement from the CARES Act dollars from from any other sources. So. So, you know, internally, I look at that and I go, okay, how can this be pieced together to maximize? The amount of grant funding that we can get with obviously not violating any of the rules. Uh for for getting those reimbursements. So. That changed how some of the grants were uh reimbursements were applied for. Uh with the ultimate goal, of course, to make the maximum amount of funding. Um available to the city and its residents. Education side, this is a a quick review. Um I I won't go into detail. These are the certifications uh that I I hold on those. And then also the uh internal and external groups. That um I'm a part of and participate in on the city's behalf. With the reports going to uh city manager Wing as as things pop up. Moving into reporting, we look at uh, you know, some of the things that are that are kind of new, for instance, the multi-year budgeting, that. Triennium award, uh that that was the first, uh you know, as we we roll into this multi-year budgeting uh format. Getting the quarterly reportman and continuing to evolve that budget document, listening to council. Um, things that are working, things that aren't working, you know, we we talk with administration, uh obviously, all the time on how can we change things? How can we make this better? Um, this isn't working so well. This, you know, how do how do we fix it? Is there is there still value add to doing it? Just because we're doing it doesn't mean you keep doing it. You know, and and keep working on refining those items. And then, of course, creating. Um, a lot of interactive models uh to try to see, as as council saw in the Saturday workshop, we had the the uh. Budget and uh as well as the um the rev- long-term revenue. Sheet and the PAC sheet with the parking fund to be able to make decisions and see what. The impacts are of various options right away. Uh in real time has been, I think, uh well received so far. On services, one of the things I I'm most proud of that that we got to say as a Rochester first, we had the senior concierge service. Uh, that's where I'd go out and and uh meet the resident uh during the 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 COVID time if uh. If if they they so desired and met them, you know, at the front door, masked up, gloved up, all all those things to to handle their. Uh the services they needed, whether it was, you know, paying uh your tax bill or water bill. And um I I think that they, I know they appreciated it. Uh, so that that was just a feel-good thing that that I really love about Rochester in general, because that's that's kind of like a Rochester thing. We do things to help each other out and um and and that one was was one I really uh I really liked a lot on that one. And then, of course, as we went through with COVID, we had the convenience fee waivers, we're, you know, working with the county and and the city manager. To make sure like, hey, we have some opportunities that that credit card fees can be waived and uh, oh, hey, how about the water bill? Uh late fees and and making sure those were uh facilit- facilitated uh fairly across um. The constituents here in the city. So wrapping up with, uh of course, thank you to council for for another year. Um, I do take the uh, you know, I don't take it lightly. I I try to earn. Uh my place here. I know I'm I'm appointed by council and can be obviously unappointed, but I try to do everything I can. Make sure the city is well taken care of on the on uh my department, on the financial side, the plan is is there. Administration, council, the department has, they have the tools they need uh to succeed and and uh reporting uh as needed. Um, so with that, um I I can uh hit blame for the for the recap. I I saw on the the scoring one that we had the uh. Uh the two and a half percent on the uh scoring. Um, I will request council to consider. The point five percent for projects that are above and beyond normal things. Um, uh with all the things that I I highlighted tonight for council to consider. Of course, the whole thing's for council to consider, but that is what I had. Happy to answer any questions and thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Anthony. Really, um, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for getting that to us ahead of time. Um, also, I just want to say congratulations on a lot of really excellent work this year, uh challenging year. Has um, and that's that's like the the starting point in terms of how challenging it was, right? Um, very challenging year and a lot of great work. The budget process has um. Improved significantly over the past few years. The new tools we're using are great. Um, I just have two areas of um improvement um that I would like to just continue. Um, to talk about. Number one is. Um, we we're a small community and you wear two hats. Um, and so I think, you know, that can be sometimes be perceived as a conflict. I'm not saying it's a conflict, but you've got a finance hat and you've got a fire hat. Um, you know, many of us wear multiple hats. I have a day job and I'm a councilperson. So the way you work through that perceived conflict is you communicate. So just really continue to work on that communication, whether it be. Hey, I've got a fire commitment, and so I'm going to need to go upstate, so I'm not going to be down here. In the quote-unquote office. Communicate that ahead of time proactively. in the quote-unquote office. Communicate that ahead of time proactively. Um, just communicate on those things. You know, we just went through a big healthcare um review. Well, you're a beneficiary of that healthcare. So communicating, hey, I'm a beneficiary of this, but this is my opinion, or this is the the best financial position for the city. You know, just communicating those things, I think, would um just really help help you grow as well. Um, and kind of on the growth standpoint, just always be looking for opportunities to um improve in the area of polish. You know, challenge yourself to be around people, other financial people. Um, treasurers that maybe have skills that you don't have. Um, you know, presentation skills, things that you can continue to work on. But um again, great work, great year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council. Senator Peterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So Anthony, uh, thank you for your presentation and um it's been um a pleasure working with uh you again another year. Um, and uh seeing seeing the um the work and the leadership that you've provided to the uh city, especially during this um uh during uh it has been amazing during this um, you know, very difficult time. And trying to keep things orderly, keep things, you know, the priorities straight. I think you've done a fabulous job with that. I think uh your leadership with your finance team and the finance department has been um state-of-the-art. You guys are always forward-thinking. You're bringing you're bringing programs and things to us and easier ways of um showing us um all the differences of what the dollars make and the new programs and things that you guys have done. I think that has been one of the biggest and best tools we could have ever asked for. It's a real total hands-on. Um, from our budget workshop, when seeing those numbers plop in and for all the differences when we're talking, it makes it easier to make decisions. I think that uh moving forward, I think that um you know, I don't know what else to say, except um you have worked extremely hard to go out there and find um these grants, um which, you know, that is above and beyond most, especially on the pension bonding. Taking on something like that, that was, you know, to find it, know that pushing that envelope. I think pushing the envelope is what you do really well uh for the things that matter. Um, actually, and I guess one of the biggest things that I see that you did this year was um making sure that the city did stay connected uh during COVID. And all of that. I know from the outside, we see this, you know, we see it differently than everyone internally, but I think that um you and your team as well have worked really hard at doing that. Um, I appreciate uh all that grant funding that saves us money. I do really like that we've had a lot of Rochester first things that other communities can't compete with. Uh, things that, you know, experienced finance guys haven't done because they're so used to the doing the same-o, same-o. Um, and anyone can do all of that. Um, I think expanding um the horizons for you, um uh, they are, I think, any job that you're given to do or you think of doing to and know to expand and bring us better financing is um, you know, one of your top, one of your top qualities. Um, I have been around the city long enough to know of twelve years now of watching um budgets go through the hands of the city council. And this by far, you and your finance team have done the best that the city has ever seen with some of the biggest savings that we've ever seen as well to know how we can do this, um especially with the three-year, multi-year budgeting and things like that. Um, those things are very important. And um, again, kudos to you, Marcy, everybody on your team. Uh, you're a great leader, um taking care of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also, Member Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anthony, I I also wanted to personally thank you as well for your dedication and uh the guidance you've provided us to make uh some tough decisions and and giving us a path forward. Um, I think I was more impressed too with the comparison both of your self-evaluation, your peers, and then what council itself um rated you. Was very consistent, and I I think that's a testament to you and um your abilities and and your work product. So with that said, I would I would support or make a motion to approve the two and a half percent um increase this year.
So we have a motion to recommend a two-point-five percent pay increase to city treasurer.
I'd support that.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, um, I don't know. I don't know about the rest of council, but you know, considering we had um people jumping in and doing extraordinary things during these extraordinary times. I think that um being able to keep us up and running, not being like other communities that couldn't even do meetings. We were first ones to do so. I mean, on a dime, we've done a lot of things to go ahead and enhance our services. Also, really save money, look for extra money. I actually think the work that um Anthony has done this year is worth a three percent raise. So um, I think that is um, you know, we've gone and awarded many people with many things um this year because of what has taken place, but his actions and his work um has actually uh shined through to go ahead and get us to this place today, which we are finishing out a year um that has been non-stop. And I really think that that type of work is deserving of three percent.
Further comments by council? I'd just like to say, I think Anthony, you've done a good job this year. You've done a lot of really good things. Those grants have been excellent work. Um, I know you've done a lot of good work with the budget committee and, you know, with the OPEB committee and things. So a lot of excellent things. You know, looking for a few things, growth, first thing I would agree with the Mayor Pro Tem, that I think the the fire issue is a perception issue potentially. Um, and hey, it's hard, like, it it's hard to wear two hats. It's hard to exist in two worlds at the same time, especially when you're a department manager on the treasury. So I mean, I think that's just something you need to always consider, keep that at the top of your mind. And I guess, and kind of going with that, the other thing I would say is you, you know, I I know you worked your way up to that job, which is admirable. But you have to remember now that you are, you know, you're not one of the one of the rank and file now. You're a department manager. Um, so you have to, you know, always keep that in mind when you're looking at issues and looking at um, you know, your position in the city now is, I think, a lot different than it used to be. I think you know that, but I mean, that's just something you need to keep in mind. So any further comments?
Uh, yes, please.
Also, Member Peterson.
You know, I'm I'm a little, I'm I guess I'm sitting here a little concerned about maybe I don't hear, I don't hear things that I maybe I should. Um, uh, how is, uh, because we've, we did this back when we first um had interviewed Anthony for this position and all of that about, you know, having the two hats and things like that. Um, has something happened that I should be aware of that he has like not been doing his job because of that? Um, I mean, I guess I I would just like to know because it's now two people on council have brought that up, and I find that interesting because I haven't, I haven't heard or seen it skip a beat as far as what he does for the city.
I think.
And, you know, when you, uh, sorry, and um, you know, when he was called to go take care of the flood issue, that's something that was, you know, above and beyond, and we should actually have been you know, very uh proud to know that people in our community were actually asked to go do do things like that. So I guess other than that, if I could just hear some reasons why, it would help me understand.
Well, I would just say, and it was something to be um commended and admirable for him to do. Uh, but it was not communicated uh very well, and that's why it was an issue. So that's what we're talking about. Just he needs to communicate that when things like that happen, that he might be gone for a couple of days.
Okay, but if he gets sick, he's going to be gone for a couple of days. I guess that's my point.
Well, but you need to communicate that either way, right?
Well, no, I know, but I I guess I I don't know. It's interesting that I would like us to go ahead and make sure that we um treat all department heads the same then, with the same expectations, because we don't.
I think.
That's all I'm going to say on that. Thank you.
Okay, Madam, um, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I I'd just like to add that I've been serving with Anthony on the Budgeting Committee. It's been a pleasure working with you this past year. I've learned a lot and appreciate you taking the time to to walk through so much uh with me so I can be an effective council member, and it seems like you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark, the role, please.
Nixon?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Babacua?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes, but not happy with it.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Anthony, uh, for your service to the city.
Absolutely. Thank you, council. It is great. I look forward to another awesome year with you guys. We're going to keep this momentum going. Nothing's going to stop us.
I I love that. Thank you. Okay, now on to uh reports from various boards and commission. A report from the Downtown Development Authority, uh, Councilmember Peterson.
All right, thank you. So we had a very good meeting. And um, I wasn't there to give our update. Unfortunately, I came in a little late to the meeting. But uh, there was uh some outdoor seating grant applications for the Royal Park Hotel that was presented. And we also had um finance presentation from um Anthony and Marcy uh for uh where they're at right now. And there was discussion for upcoming goals and objectives meetings uh for both the DDDA and the PSD, and they want to do a joint planning discussion as well uh for an upcoming fiscal year. And other than that, um, everything has been very successful. And at the last meeting, it was um announced that uh Consumers Energy gave a grant of seven thousand dollars to the city uh to be able to match funds to help of with the sale of gift certificates to help the businesses. Uh, you know, prosper downtown, which was very awesome of Consumers Energy to uh to do that. And um, the advertising that uh Christie and her team did with putting it out on Love Local and the DDA, they sold out uh that seven thousand dollars worth of uh um gift certificates in three hours. So uh, people from all around um who are on Love Local are the ones who purchased the ticket, uh, purchased those gift certificates. So that match was um uh one of the good things to keep the money here um floating through our community and people coming back. Um, and we also talked about, um, as you know, Mayor, the uh funding for the parking decks. And uh that was approved uh unanimously uh to uh take the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the site development fund and uh use it for the uh upcoming uh parking structure debt service. And raise the, I don't, I don't believe, I can't remember because I caught, came in late after that, so that's about it.
Very good. And I just, I think the DDA goals and objectives is going to be, I believe, January twelfth. Um, for anybody who's interested. Okay, uh, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I have a, just a quick question for Councilmember Peterson. I'm wondering if there's been any more discussion about extending free parking or offering it again during the Big Bright Light Show at all, if that's been discussed or considered.
At this point in time, I have not heard any discussion of that because we can't necessarily afford that. And right now, the extra two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that the DDA has given to the city to pay for the parking debt. Um, I don't think that is something that we can actually do in the future. But it hasn't been discussed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say the Parking Advisory Committee did not, did not discuss that or recommend that. That correct, Councilmember Sage?
Correct.
Okay, um, next is the rece- receipt report from the Principal Shopping District, uh, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this might not be a surprise to anyone, but Fire and Ice from the county has been canceled this year. Uh, so there won't be a Fire and Ice Festival. However, the PSD discussed still doing the ice sculptures um and shopping promotions during that time. So we're hopeful we'll get some interest in businesses having the ice sculptures, which I think is a great addition uh to the winter season this year. Festival of Trees uh wasn't able to happen in in person, but we still had a great uh virtual turnout and and sales were high. It would, it was less than previous years, but I think overall, everyone was satisfied with the amount uh that was raised during the event. And I know uh some of you purchased trees and decorations for your home and we're grateful for that on the PSD. Uh, we are having a neighborhood light fight. I drove down Lublow today and there's lots of neighbors participating in this friendly competition to see who has the most holiday spirit. Uh, that's been new this year and been very successful. We're starting to do joint meetings with the DDA um in December. It actually started December ninth. I wasn't able to attend uh that evening. But we'll be doing that moving forward for uh for the foreseeable future. And then we have also set our goals and objectives meeting. Um, and I can give you that date is for the twelfth, January twelfth. And that is all we discussed that evening, unless Nick has anything to add. I think he was there too. Thank you.
Nick, anything to add?
Yeah, no, I think she'd be great. Um, I just saw that Christie just posted something. I think they put a theme to the what um Councilwoman just talked about, the Fire and Ice Weekend. I think it's called Smoke Glow. And they're, you know, still trying to get people out and and see the sculptures and all that good stuff. So I think there's more to come from that, from the PSD, Christie's office, next place. Yeah.
Good point. The theme this year for the ice sculptures is Christmas. So that's a one, my personal favorite.
You got it.
Very good. Uh, next receiver report from the Planning Commission, Councilmember Babacua.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a pretty light uh schedule for us. We um determined the uh the schedule for twenty twenty-one, so we set that and um and then uh we had Beckett and Raider, our uh partner for the new master plan uh come in and introduce themselves to uh the Planning Commission, and that was it.
Very good. Next is report from the OPEB Retirement Board. Councilmember Sage, you want to handle that?
Uh, sure. Um, while we we discussed the, a part of the consent agenda tonight, the one-fifteen trust uh and moving forward with that, we reallocated some um some of our portfolio resources, and it was interesting, the the approach that Morgan Stanley is taking versus our previous administration um of our funding. And they're positioning us with a bit more, well, less risk, but more return. Um, was, it was very it was very enlightening, it was very comforting uh hearing the report from them, and I I feel good moving forward with with Morgan Stanley.
Yeah, I I would just say I I agree with uh feeling pretty good about the move to Morgan Stanley. And of course, it always sounds awfully good when you can get a higher return with less risk, so uh hard, hard to say no to that one, right?
Right.
Um, but hopefully that's that's true. And then we we have a OPEB meeting at the end of January. Um, where we're going to make some investment decisions about the the money that we bonded for, um and kind of what to do with that. So that's upcoming as well. Okay, next is new business for referral miscellaneous. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
All right, we just had a a few things um wanted to highlight. Um, as the city gets additional information about uh the vaccination uh plan from the state and down to the county, uh, I'll be passing that along to city council as well as uh uh pushing that out through our website and our social media. Um, so uh uh as soon as we we hear Um, so, uh, uh, as soon as we, we hear and get additional information, I'll be sharing that. Um, we did get, uh, from the PC, uh, not this last meeting, but the prior meeting, the infilled, uh, um, amendment language, and that will be coming up, uh, that was, uh, shared with council and, uh, previously. And now we'll, we'll be bringing that to our next, uh, council meeting for, uh, discussion. Again, is that's a, a zoning, uh, component. There'll be two, two parts. So, that will be in December and then carried over to the, the first meeting in, in January. Um, in addition to that, I did want to highlight, um, staff did meet to, uh, discuss the outdoor burning, uh, topic. We came up with two possible options. The first one being the option is of simply using the city's existing ordinance. However, if we do receive complaints, uh, we would, uh, operate under the assumption that the atmospheric conditions are not ideal for an outdoor fire and thus, uh, ask, um, you know, uh, the person to, or the, the, the property to extinguish, uh, the fire. If, if this is council's, uh, direction, we simply just need, uh, you know, council tonight to, to give us that, uh, to, to implement it. The other option is to look at the Grand Rapids, uh, outdoor recreational, uh, fire policy as a template. And, um, staff would, would go through the process, work with our attorney and the fire and police departments to, uh, put together, uh, any of the possible costs, uh, of having a permit process. Craft a, uh, an ordinance and then bring that forward for council's review and comment. So, um, I'm not sure if, if council wants to, you know, discuss that further tonight, but those were, uh, on the outdoor uh, burning, th- those were the two options. Again, I'm happy for, you know, um, uh, council to give me feedback over the next, uh, week or two. And then bring something forward in January, or our next council meeting happens to be a week from tonight. So, I would need that, that, any comments if council wanted something done, uh, for next week's discussion. I would need that all by, by Thursday.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, City Manager Wing for looking into this issue further. I know that we've had several complaints and it's very important because the quality of health of our residents, um, is always top concern. I'm wondering, do, does our fire department now have the authority now to ask that a fire be extinguished? If it's deemed a nuisance or if they feel uncomfortable with it in any way, and how would this be different?
Chief, maybe you can, and I know Attorney Krot also has our ordinance that he can highlight, uh, the specific language that we've internally referenced.
Chief Caesar?
Current, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, under the, the bill, uh, burning ordinance or, or recreational fires, the ability to determine whether it's a go or no-go comes off of a smoker scale which deals with the color, the smoke and the density. Um, the piece that's always been one that, uh, we've never really been able to quantitate would be under the noxious odors. And what's considered to be noxious or not noxious. Um, for, to go, to take away any of the, um, the piece of, of discriminatory decision-making. Uh, the discussion that we talked with the city attorney was that if it was found to be offensive by the neighbor and they complained, then under the, uh, recreational fire, there is a case, uh, of section in there that talks about environmental conditions. And we would then determine that the environmental conditions were, um, were such that the, uh, the odor was uh, being held close to the ground and causing an issue. Uh, maybe Attorney Krot would like to opine on that.
Attorney Kroc, he's there. I think we're all, I think we're all watching, uh, the work going on in Anthony's office right now, seeing that.
I was trying to get the.
That's really interesting, actually.
I was trying to get the code up here so I can, sorry about that little pause. Um, so, right now, the, the, the fire chief does have the ability, uh, to, if he deems, um, the atmospheric conditions, uh, you know, he pulled it up here. All right, so, right now, the, the code does have the, the chief have the ability to prohibit any outdoor fire, including outdoor fires maintained in the approved devices, you know, those, uh, kuminaas and pots and, and so forth. Um, if the atmospheric conditions or local circumstances makes, uh, such fires hazardous. So, right now, that is the, really the extent of, uh, the fire chief's ability, uh, to order it out. Um, as the chief does, uh, rightfully point out, um, part of the complaints have moved from the smoke, uh, to odor. Um, and so that, that wouldn't, I mean, the, the chief certainly could, uh, order that. Uh, city council has not really, um, I guess, decided at this point to, uh, make it a more robust process or robust conditions or more strict regulations. We, if you recall, we discussed such things as, um, locations of the fire towards property lines, having, um, emergency or, uh, you know, fire extinguishing capabilities, uh, handy, um, in so forth. Uh, or in one of the things that was discussed is time, um, you know, and you have outdoor fires, you know, throughout, you know, twenty-four seven, or there's certain hours you can't. Um, so that, that ordinance was discussed back in, uh, I believe April was the last time. So, um, if city council wanted to revisit that, that would be, uh, a, a possible step. Uh, as City Manager Wing mentioned, the, uh, Grand Rapids process, um, that we've all kind of looked through together. Um, and that is a, a, certainly a more, uh, robust process of having to apply for a permit to have outdoor fires. And having to check with neighbors to make sure, to see if they're going to object to this, uh, those fires. Um, so that is a, I would put that at, at one end of the, the laborious, you know, uh, spectrum of having to get approval. So, it's really up to city council on how you wish to proceed. There are provisions, as I just am showing, um, that allow the chief to, to do, uh, make some of those determinations now.
Mayor Protem, Salvia?
Yes, thank you. So, you know, I know we've talked about this many times and I, I think we all probably are in agreement that we have a resident who, who has a problem here. Um, clearly, it's a problem. It's affecting, um, their home, their quality of life. Um, I'm in favor of using the, the laws that we have in place and allowing the fire department to put out a fire in this situation without, I'm not in favor of creating more laws and regulations that could have unintended consequences for other residents. So, I'm in favor of, um, I'll say option A.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I, I kind of want to do a blend. Um, for me, this is a neighbor issue. Um, yes, there are health implications depending on the data you read. I understand all that. But if you had, um, if you got a permit for an open fire burn that was agreed to by every contiguous property to the person doing the burn, again, neighbors being neighbors, and there's an agreement, and I think a lot of this would resolve itself. Um, for us to use or interpret our ordinance and then just put the onus on the police chief to go out and enforce at every instance, someone could just make a call and say, hey, this is, um, unacceptable, needs to be. Then the chief has to be put in a position to determine, yes, there, there, it is within the ordinance to apply and put out the fire. So, I, I welcome the discussion further. I don't think it's, uh, appropriate tonight. If, if it wants to be an agenda item, I'm, I'm welcome to that. Um, but I'm also want to explore the opportunity to, to get some agreement amongst neighbors.
Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, thank you. And, um, I too would want this to be an agenda item before we actually discuss it and make it. Because, um, if, um, the constituents who have had the issues with this did not see it on the agenda, um, or if they would have, they would probably have been on the call to, um, you know, do some public comment. And I do not want to take that away from them. I also, uh, feel that we really need to think long and hard how, um, councilmember Salvia talked about it, whether or not, how we want to really perceive moving forward and how much more we want to go into, um, you know, uh, be in the police of this. Um, but I do think there needs to be a solution to this, so.
Further discussion? So, Ms., uh, Councilmember Sage?
I just had a, 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 a different, uh, question for manager wing, but if you want to finish this item first.
Councilmember Babacqua?
Yeah, just a quick comment on this then. Um, yeah, I, I tend to, uh, uh, agree with, uh, councilmember Sage. Uh, to me, I, I like to see these sort of things resolved between neighbors. Um, if we put something into place that requires neighbor sign-off, and I, I know it could be used, uh, in a contentious neighbor situation to punish somebody or in a punitive way, there is that, uh, impact that could, that could come of it as well. But, um, you know, if ultimately the, the, uh, the resident has the opportunity to, to, to burn propane or, you know, do something that doesn't include, um, you know, uh, burning wood. Um, then, and then there's some sort of alternative. It's not as if they wouldn't be able to have pleasure with an outdoor flame of some sort. So, I think we should think about that, and I guess when it gets on the agenda, we'll, we'll look at it further. Thanks.
So, Mr. Manager, why don't we put something on the agenda, maybe? It may be the first one in January if you need time to, I know it's only a short week.
Yep. Yeah, thank, thank you for the feedback. Uh, it, it will be the first one in January because just, uh, it's a very truncated week now. So, I would only have a couple of days here to kind of formulate that. I'll work with our fire chief, police chief and our attorney. So, thank you for the comments.
I mean, I think in the interim, the fire chief has, has our blessing to put out a fire if he feels like it's necessary. Is that, is that a fair comment? Yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, anything else?
Uh, that is it.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. Um, Mr., uh, city attorney, anything tonight?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Assistant City Manager Banda?
All set, thank you.
Uh, Chief Shutter?
I think Stuart froze.
Yep.
Chief Steve, I don't know.
This is my big moment. I now get to run the meeting. All right. So, uh, Chief, do you have anything to add?
I'm good, thank you.
Come on, all right. Um, who has not spoken? Anthony?
All set, council. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Uh, Jeremy from the DPW, anything?
Ma- Mayor, I think you're back in.
Oh, I'm out.
Oh, Nancy lobster moment, the rest of it.
Mayor Protem, I appreciate your, uh, it's funny, I'm on Zoom like eight hours a day. It never goes out. It'll just city council means I don't understand that. Uh, councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, thank you. I would just like to say that I had a, an issue at my, my home um, that required the DPW to come out, um, and, and look at the issue. And I just really appreciated how the city and the DPW department handled it. They worked really quickly. And I'd just like to encourage any residents, if they do run into issues and have questions, to call the DPW because they do great work. And I got to see it unfortunately firsthand, so I'm just grateful for that.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem, Salvia?
Um, yeah, two things. Um, so I know, um, from a variety of, um, boards, we've had some discussions around, um, getting grant money in addition to the work that Finance Director has done. So, there's this new, um, Parks Trust that we currently, uh, recently passed some additional funding measures at a state level. So, you know, we're looking at funding for facilities. We're looking at funding for, um, um, perhaps dinosaur hills, so a couple of different avenues. So, Mayor, I just wondered, what would the process be to put together a subcommittee or task force to look at that from a citywide standpoint?
Yeah, and do, uh, Mr. City Manager, do we have to have a, a, a vote of the council to create a subcommittee? Or not?
It depends on the committee. Uh, Mayor, you have the authority to create an ad hoc committee, but if it's going to be a, a, a continuous committee that's going to go for a long period of time, um, I would ask the attorney to kind of, uh, formalize the structure. But if it's an ad hoc, which I believe would, would be within your, your year's term, um, you have that ability.
Councilmember Salvi, should we do an ad hoc committee, or do you want it to make it more? Or we can think about it till next week?
Well, I think, I think the scope of work, um, in terms of we want to make sure that we can get funding and we know we need to move quickly, so my recommendation would be to make it an ad hoc committee. And at, after maybe the first report out, if we want to extend it and make it an official committee, then we could do that.
Okay. So, let's, let's make it an ad hoc committee and let's create that committee right now? If that's, do we, again, we don't need a motion, we can just create it?
Yep, Mayor, you just say that this committee is, you know, hereby formed, and if you could give us some, uh, definition of how many, you know, if it's going to be council members or the composition, uh, staff's happy to, you know, to, to get that committee filled or, or work with you to fill spots even at the next meeting, or if you have people that you want to already work, just let us know.
Yeah, so let's form that committee now. Um, I think, Mayor Protem Salvi, I think you maybe had talked to councilmember Peterson.
Yes, Chief, the councilmember Peterson has been the one who's been bringing this up and brought the idea, so I think she should be on the committee.
Councilmember Peterson, would you like to be on the committee?
Um, yes, I would. That would be nice.
So, I'd point councilmember Peterson and then we'll, um, as the councilperson, and then we will, um, appoint some people. I'll talk with the city manager. And again, if anybody has any, uh, suggestions, then we'll appoint some people next, uh, next meeting, next Monday. That sound good?
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
And then the only other quick thing I had was that the community house last Saturday had, um, um, you know, they normally have a Santa breakfast, but in the twenty twenty spirit of pivoting and making the most out of something, they had a Santa snack and dash. So, that was the last kind of event at the community house, but just trying to keep that community love and community spirit going on and, uh, as safe as possible. So, thank you and, um, enjoy the lights downtown. And in the neighborhoods, there's so many amazing lights, um, in all the neighborhoods, not even the ones on the map. Everyone has really just decked their houses this year.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Babacqua?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick thing, um, wanted to, wanted to clear up the public record on a, a discussion we had last council meeting. I think it was, uh, we were discussing, uh, Elizabeth Park and the, uh, community benefit, uh, project that was associated with it. Uh, for the, uh, special project designation that was given to the, um, uh, the residences at Royal Park. And I'd asked, uh, how long it had been since, um, they had their, uh, certificate of occupancy. Um, and, uh, the response from administration was about a year. Um, so I, I, I felt like that wasn't quite as long as ago as I thought it was, so I checked into it. And, um, it's almost two years to, to, to the day. It was Jan- January sixth, uh, uh, two thousand nineteen. I guess that would have been two years ago. So, um, just wanted to make sure that was on record. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, want to give a shout out to Ra Ra for an awesome Santa and cookies event that they put on. So, in the spirit of all that, to keep the children, um, moving forward, that was great. Um, also, thank you for, uh, putting together this ad hoc committee. Uh, hopefully, um, we can, um, make some good use of the free grant money. And also want to thank, uh, the DDA, um, as, uh, councilmember, um, Harrison brought up regarding the Festival of Trees. Uh, they did a fabulous job, uh, last minute having things and everything turned out great. Walking through, um, their, um, uh, their, the collaboration studio with all those trees when they were decorating them and that. It was just, it was just magical. Uh, great group of people volunteering their time for our community. So, I thought that was, that was great. So, thank you very much. Merry Christmas almost.
Very good. Uh, City Clerk O'Connor?
Uh, just, um, you and I had discussed the boards and commissions app, uh, appointments. And we, um, for the next meeting, we have the Planning Commission, city councilperson on the agenda that needs to be renewed. It's currently, uh, councilmember Babacqua.
Okay. So, so that's the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do I make an appointment tonight or do I?
Yeah, this, um, is actually the appointment, the councilperson, um, on this Planning Commission is a city council appointment. So I'll prepare a memo for next, um, next week's meeting.
Very good. No, no election updates today?
Um, I, I, they were, today was the Electoral College.
Got that.
Almost there.
Who won? I'm not sure. I, I know it was still up in the air, so.
Yeah, it was. Last I looked before this meeting, it was, uh, uh, Biden two forty-two, um, and I don't know what the other one, um.
That's okay. I, I'll check the news tomorrow.
Yeah. It's probably, probably because, uh, California hadn't reported yet, so.
Right. I, I don't think they had.
And Hawaii.
Um, okay, I have just a couple. Just remember, we do have our city council meeting next Monday. So it's not the usual two weeks, um, the twenty-first. Um, also, just, um, usually we, usually the, uh, city council has the traditional, um, have a, have a drink afterwards. Um, so I, I guess we probably will not be doing that this time, but I, I promise that when, when, and it looks like sooner maybe, hopefully, uh, we will have that at a place downtown and celebrate the, hopefully, the, uh, COVID declining and where, when we're all vaccinated and things like that, we can go out and, um, have that drink. So we promise we will do that. And also, again, I think watching the news today and seeing that the vaccination is coming, I think that's very positive news. But I will say, you know, caution everybody, stay safe the next few months until, until it gets here. Um, I think that's very important. So let's all be leaders out there and I know we are and stuff. And so I have, so thank you, everybody for coming tonight. Um, we will see everybody here right back, uh, next Monday. So, buddy, have a good evening.
Good night.
Night.